Yeah, I'd like to call to order the town of Old Sabre, zoning commission for Monday, December 4th, 7:00 PM, Town Hall, first floor conference room. Roll call tonight, Mark Calorella's chair, Jeradine Lewis, or Jerry Lewis secretary, Robert Freeman, regular commission member, our two newest commissioners, Laura Gray and John Henry. And we have tonight Brenda Dyson and our newest alternate, Michael Kelly. Everybody has been sworn in, I presume, for the section? Okay, great. Thank you. First order of business is minutes from our Monday, November 6th, 2023 meeting. Make a motion to accept the minutes?
Second.
Second, any discussions, any changes or additions or deletions? I did not see any.
I didn't either.
No one else on that note will vote? All in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstention. Thank you very much. I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, that's fine. One abstention for Laura Gray, because she was not part of the zoning commission at the time. Correspondence, we have one correspondence tonight, and that is Bill from Calor and Sage. Do you have that as part of your?
I don't have that either.
Okay, do you want me to?
Go ahead.
Okay. It's for invoice number 11424753, within the amount of $2,640 and zero cents.
Is that the only one?
That's the only one.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Seconded by John Henry, any discussion? No discussion, take a vote. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstention. Thank you very much.
Did the meeting schedule get approved?
Yeah, we're getting to that now.
That's very nice. On the agenda, so we have the 2024 meeting schedule, starting in January through December. Is there any conflicts or errors that anybody saw in the meeting dates for 2024?
I don't even have the calendar. I don't know what packet I have. I don't have that either.
Do you have your last packet?
That's where everything is until last packet.
Okay, then, I don't have that. I'm sure it's fine.
Okay. Questions or comments? Make a motion to accept. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions. Thank you very much. Old Business, Atlas Outdoor Application for Site Plan Review for 13,500 square foot outdoor storage area for storage or retail inventory, zero middlesex turnpike, accessories map 41 and 42 lots 12 and 13.3, industrial I, industrial one district, that has been, as of November 30th, from the email that we received from my has been pulled from the agenda for this evening, and the application has been pulled.
Withdrawn.
Withdrawn, sorry.
Withdrawn, yeah.
New Business, A Monkey Farm Cafe, application for minor modification, a special exception permit to expand outdoor seating from 12 to 50 seats, 571 Boston Post Road, accessories map 40, lot 44, shopping district, shopping center B2 district, owner Harry F. Corning Realty, applicant Laura Corning, action, consider and act. Is there someone here tonight?
So actually Laura Corning is online. She needs to be promoted as a panelist. So as the commission is aware, we, the governor did not extend COVID outdoor seating this year, and the commission kind of gave a end of the year's grace period, because a lot of the businesses did have their COVID seating already set up. And we asked that the businesses who wanted to continue and have outdoor seating beyond their previous approvals, we asked that they come in and request their outdoor seating to become permanent. So Laura Corning's here on behalf of the Monkey Farm with a request to keep the outdoor seating that they currently have.
You can admit her as a panelist?
He is. He said please. Laura?
Laura, can you hear us?
I can hear you. I just can't see me.
Okay, well, welcome.
You have your video muted. If you click that, we should be able to see it.
Well, as long as we can hear her.
As long as we can hear her.
We don't need to see her.
Probably doesn't matter.
Laura, do you want to just give a brief overview of what your proposal is?
Yes, my proposal is that we can continue to put up our tent and have 50 outdoor seating throughout the summer months, and, um, yeah, that's about it.
Okay, um, we do, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So to just to kind of summarize a little more, the zoning regulations do allow for expanded outdoor seating up to an additional 50 feet, or 50 seats when an applicant can demonstrate that they are in an area where there's sufficient parking, public transit, and so forth. And if you review the application, the Monkey Farm discusses the wide variety of transportation being located in close proximity, or on Main Street or North Main Street, and with the train station, the commuter parking, nearby apartments, sidewalks, and a pedestrian-friendly area. The proposal is to allow the outdoor seating to continue. And there is a health approval.
Yes, approval that we received. We have a statement of use. We have a letter from Laura explaining their request, especially detailing the wide variety of transportation available at that particular location, from commuter lots, the public transportation, the walking, as well as shuttles that come in and drop people off. We have.
You have a site plan, you have the photographs, you have a statement of use. You also do have one letter of concern from Kimberly McEwen of 32 Dudley Avenue that has concerns about this modification.
Has everybody received those in their package and been able to review them? Commissioners, any questions or comments that would like to make?
Next question, in the, provide specific details of the business, including products to be sold, services to be rendered on the statement of use. Three lines up from the bottom, instead of, we have arcade games, note that in our regulations, there should not be more than two, more than two amusements for a fee, and so however many arcade games there, there should, should not be more than two at present. And then on the next line, on the last line, sorry, it says live music is not permitted. Included in live music is a person, such as a DJ, playing recorded music, so that there's no confusion about what's live music. We all know that real-time playing of instruments would be live music, but our interpretation of live music is a DJ spinning whatever discs or things that have music, that's also live music.
Correct.
And they don't, they will not have that.
I was gonna say, no, they won't have that.
They're not proposing here.
Yeah.
They're not proposing either variety, either live music or DJs, not in there. And I believe there's only two arcade games in there. Is that correct, Laura?
Yes, there's two arcade games, and then we have darts and pool.
Right.
Yeah.
Great, okay. Any other questions?
They had a question about the permanency of this. Could we ask them to do this as a permanent dilution?
So what happened was, when COVID came along, Governor Lamont's executive order 7MM allowed for businesses to have outdoor seating, and that has continued this year. What we did was the governor, it's always been kind of a last anything, and the part of the seating is already outdoors in many circumstances, and we weren't sure what was going to happen, and rather than have 15, 20 COVID outdoor seating applicants come in and rush, the commission decided not to require immediate enforcement by the zoning officer to remove the COVID outdoor seating, and gave applicants through the end of the year an opportunity to decide if they would like to either remove that seating and extinguish the COVID outdoor seating permanently and go back to what they were originally permitted for, which originally at the Monkey Farm were just some seats at the deck, or if they would like to keep that expanded outdoor seating. Many of the businesses, some of them who never had outdoor seating, realized that it worked out well for their businesses. So in this circumstance, the Monkey Farm is one of the few that has come in to ask for the COVID seating permanent.
So should this be a permanent?
This will be permanent, yes. So this is an application to allow for the seating permanent. And the only other, I think, the diner and Penny Lane were the only others that came through in the past few years to ask for the seating permanent.
One more, one more question. The tent, will it have sides? Because if it has sides, it falls under the jurisdiction of the building department, and it becomes a building. So the tent will not have vertical sides under the roof of the tent, right?
Correct. We don't have sides for the tent.
Right.
Do not.
And I believe the building department and the fire marshal do inspect the tents annually, even though they do not have sides sides because of their size.
Correct.
Any, anything else, commissioners?
I have a question.
Yeah.
He was also asking about parking spaces, and if per limited parking space requirements could be overlooked?
Well, the, the request as part of the statement of use and the letter that we received from Laura is that due to the uniqueness of the location and the access to public transportation, the train station, as well as other lots, and Main Street, and the walkability of the location are all positive, that would be applicable to this particular application, it would be acceptable.
So just to clarify, well, it is, that's kind of the majority of the requests. So the Section 53 Special Standards has requirements for outdoor seating as an accessory use, and that's based on the number of parking spaces. And the zoning commission amended those regulations several years ago, because there are situations, for example, like in a marina, or a hotel, or somewhere where you have, like the Monkey Farm, where you have a lot of parking, and people can walk there from other locations, that in addition to what they can have based on the requirements per the parking spaces, that they can ask for up to an additional 50, when they can demonstrate that it can work, and it's an area that's pedestrian-friendly, there's nearby parking, which this location, if you really think about it, I mean, you've got multiple public parking lots, apartment buildings, the train station.
Yeah.
It looks in their exam.
I answered. We did receive one letter that was dated November 20th for a prior meeting. I apologize if I pronounced the last name incorrectly, but McEwen.
Yeah.
Has everybody seen that?
Yeah.
Are there any questions for that, or is someone here representing her? Can I?
Please answer your questions about how it is like to live near a restaurant.
Would you like, would you like to say a few words? If you would identify yourself for the record, please?
Sure, I'm Tim McEwen.
Can you spell your last name?
Sure. It's M.C. capital E.W.E.N. And I just want to say, I like the Monkey Farm. This is nothing personal. We eat there. Food's great, and if I live here in town, I'm 60 years old. I've been going to the Monkey Farm for years. So this is not a personal thing. This is just strictly observation from someone who is living within 250 feet of an outdoor dining establishment, okay? And I will say, like I said in my letter, it's nothing, even without the music, without the live music, which was a disaster, but even just mechanic music, and listening to people laugh and shout, and dishes clanging all the time. It's been, it's seven days a week, and in the summertime, when it's busy, it can get quite bad. The thing is, when I looked at this particular situation, I can understand how it might seem like a good fit, but when you look at the maps, there are people living very, very close to this parking lot. You've got the Dragers that live right across the street, you've got apartments over the artist's store with families in there. And, you know, you don't realize what an impact all this noise has on people, especially at night. And so if I were to ask questions, my question would be, how late is this going? You know, their bar is open until closing time. Are they going to have people out in the parking lot until one in the morning? You know, as far as the parking and stuff goes, you've had somebody get killed at that crosswalk walking home from the Monkey Farm. So it can be a dangerous area to walk at night. It really can. I don't recall that there's much of anything there that would provide any noise relief to the neighbors that live around that area. You know, and as far as making this permanent, maybe, is there a length permanent option that would be considered here, so that if this turns out not to be a good idea? Because, I mean, we're spending kind of precedent here, too, in that they've asked for, Penny Lane's asked for it. I'm sure other people are going to be coming along, and we haven't much experience with it, let's put it that way. Is there some way where, if for some reason, I mean, I will say, if things were down a bit back in the day, the Monkey Farm was a pretty crowded place to go. That's part of the reason we went there, because it was fun. But if that starts spilling out into the parking lot, because everyone has literally been serving liquor in the parking lot, if this turns out to be something that's not such a great thing for the people to have in that area, if you make it permanent, what recourse would any of the homeowners have for the people that are paying rent for looking at apartments or anything like that? You know, there's not some happy medium here. Should there not be some restrictions as to how late all of this stuff can go on at night? So that the folks that have the revival can get the leave? So those are just my comments and thoughts on the subject. Thank you.
Thank you.
In rebuttal?
Go ahead.
In rebuttal to Mr. McEwen's comments, we're asking for the summer months only. Most people have their air conditioners on, and the noise level that we use is very low. We've never had complaints before, and we've done this for the past four years.
The timing is from May until October, I believe it is, so it is restricted. Of course, there is a noise ordinance in town that is Police Department's responsibility for maintaining, that if they should go over that, they would, they would be involved as well. Any other comments from commissioners relative to questions that you raised?
No.
No?
No. Is there anyone else?
Anybody online?
Justin's online.
Hi, Justin.
Nope, nothing from me.
People will raise their hand if there's someone who's listening.
What did he say?
Nothing for him.
Oh.
Other question?
Yes.
Ms. McEwen asked about annual review of, I know this is a permanent approval, but what if there are a lot of complaints? Would something like this be subject to an annual review?
So the zoning regulations do allow for outdoor seating, and annually, we do ask for, we send out a letter in the spring asking if for permanent outdoor seating, if the business proposes to continue that, once they go through a permanent review, and at that time, that's been when we've had the opportunity to say, business so-and-so, we found, you know, there's been an issue with trash, there's been an issue with noise, and so forth. I think we have, we have over 90 outdoor seats that we permit on a seasonal basis. I did not get one complaint from any resident about the COVID seating. The only time I've heard complaints is when the proposal for this site, and I believe the same folks were complaining about Penny Lane. Otherwise, we have received no complaints. We review them annually. So this is really a first.
Yeah, not for nothing, but I don't think the people that actually live around these areas have any idea that this is how all of this works. I mean, I know we as neighbors with Penny Lane, we were trying to be good neighbors. We don't want to make trouble and put them on a busy, so we did our time. And we only found out about this procedure when the live music was going into year four, and I complained about it. And only at that point did we realize that this was a done deal. There was nothing we could do about it aside from the music. And so, you know, to say that you've not had any complaints doesn't mean that you may not ever have any complaints. And it may mean that people are still just trying to be good people and decent neighbors and support our community, but I'm not sure that if they really knew exactly that everybody, and like I said, not even specifically Monkey Farm, but any restaurant in town could come and ask for permanent seating without really anything more than a notification, zoning thing. If you don't know what's going on, you don't know what's going on, and I would never, it would never have occurred to me.
Well, people have the opportunity, whether they know there's a permit or not, and trust me, people do know how to voice their opinion and come to the land use department for these types of complaints, whether they know about the renewal procedure or not. And in my 23 years here, there's been very minimal complaints about businesses with outdoor seating. Seating, we have had issues that, you know, for example, we had businesses on Main Street expanding, so people could not walk down the street. The commission has gone through and addressed that, so that people can go and walk freely. But for the most part, people really haven't complained. They can fill out a complaint form and come to the zoning commission, but the only complaints that we've really received have been one or two over the past 23 years that I've been here.
Well, the outdoor seating thing has only become prevalent since.
No. So the, the outdoor seating in Old Sabre has been here longer than I've been here. I'd say it's probably been at least 30 years that we've allowed outdoor seating, and we do an annual renewal, and people do have an opportunity, whether it's an annual renewal, or every year we have a discussion. We do a count on how many seats we do have in Old Sabre, and people have the opportunity to come in and fill out complaints 365 days a year, those business days that we are open, and we do receive them.
So just out of curiosity.
It's not new.
It's, well, just out of curiosity, let's say that, let's say that X Y Z restaurant has 50 seats outside, and they're given permanent permission, but they're getting noise complaints, like multiple noise complaints, or multiple litter complaints, and they don't fix it. What's, what happens then?
Well, the commission, the commission has the ability to call that business in to review and discuss that. So if, if there was to be exceptional issues that would come up relative to noise, trash, whatever it might be that has come to our attention, the commission would then request that business owner to come in and interfere and explain the situation, and it would be reviewed. So it's not as if the commission grants a permanent approval for outdoor seats and then walks away and forgets about it. It would, it would be addressed.
So like any approval, if there's a violation of the permit, the zoning commission can take enforcement action.
Okay, can it be made permanent? I mean, like if it's egregious and ongoing, or is permanent, permanent common? Just curious.
It would be enforced to make the permit. I mean, if a permit's granted and the person operates within the scope of the permit, then they're fine. If they operate beyond that scope, then it's a violation.
With regards to the outdoor seating at the Monkey Farm, are there any proposed outdoor speakers for music or announcements of any kind?
No, we have a golf tournament every year, and we mic that during the day, but other than that, we never have any speaker. We have a small radio that's kept low, just for background.
So in our, in our regulations, in Section 61, there is no noise or beat frequency is allowed to be transmitted across the property line. So whatever noise is generated there in the tent or elsewhere in your outdoor seating, the noise is supposed to stay on-site.
We always keep the music at a level that doesn't cross the parking lot.
Any other, anything else from commissioners?
Out of curiosity, what time is, does the noise warning list start in the evenings?
Oh, I think it's 10. 10, I believe.
It is 10.
Seven to 10, and I think Sunday's eight to nine or something. I don't know it off the top of my head.
Not hearing any other questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Monkey Farm application for minor modification and special exception permit to expand outdoor seating from 12 to 50 seats at 571 Boston Post Road, accessories map 40, lot 44, shopping center B2 district.
Second.
Seconded by Jerry Lewis. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, passes 500. Thank you very much, Laura.
Thank you.
Moving on to public hearings, a petition to amend the Old Sabre zoning regulations to add a new Section 62.4.6. E. 5. to add a new section 62.4.6.1.5 related to parking for motor vehicle fueling stations with convenience store for a station applicant AMG Pub. Two LLC agent attorney Amy Suchin's action is to open the public hearing, continue or close by January 3rd of 2024, no later than January 7th of 2024. Wendy Suchin?
Good evening, everyone. Amy Suchin's attorney for AMG Pub 2 LLC, everyone as well. With me tonight is our project engineer, Jim Bernadino, and Zach Belovich, who is our client representative. We have two things on the agenda. We'll talk about the text amendment first and then we can get into the details of the special exception. But with respect to the text amendment, this, our proposal is to add a new section 62.4.6.1.5, which is create a parking standard for motor vehicle fueling stations with convenience stores. You spent a good portion of 2022 looking at your fueling stations. And this was one where what we believe happened in the course of various amendments and just the nature of existing stations is that AMG station, which is at 1630 Boston Post Road, a number of other stations in town are non-conformant in respect to the parking requirements. That is predominantly because your regulations in section 531 for motor vehicle fueling stations, subsection B, do not count the parking spaces at the pump. We also do not propose to include the parking spaces at the pump, which will have a practical effect as a note in the narrative of providing basically more available parking than might actually be required over the regulations. So as I noted, there are a couple of stations in town that would be affected by the regulation. They're noted in the chart that we provided, as I said, based upon what was in the assessor's reference. But I just wanted to hand out what I did just as a visual was to illustrate on Google Maps, which is a pin and where those stations are. I think everybody probably knows where they are, but I just wanted to make sure that there was a visual for all of you to think about. So what we did, as I said, in the regulation was to create or the narrative was to create a regulation at a requirement for the combined use of motor vehicle fueling station with a convenience store, one for 150 of gross floor area when applied to a station in existence on the effective date of this regulation. Reason I did that, one was to contemplate the issue that's before you, which is dealing with the existing non-conformities and the goal of zoning to reduce the non-conformities, but also to help you narrow the possible considerations before you in the sense that you don't have to think about all of the possibilities for new sites, new stations that could be affected by this regulation. It's really intended to be narrowly crafted to exist, to deal with the existing stations. Fact is that the 1015 really did, one, contemplate your retail standard, which is one per 175, the standalone convenience store, one per 100. I think historically, you know, you had just a convenience store and you had people who were coming in and parking that where that very fairly low standard comes in and then fairly high standard. And then your retail standard is obviously a lower parking requirement there. So what winds up happening as we step forward in the chart is that of the five stations, including the AMG Pub site shown in the chart, four of them become conforming under this regulation. As you'll note in the chart, the shortfall in all of the stations, which are remarkably similar in size and pump configuration, size of the store, number of existing parking spaces, as you'll see. Happy to answer any questions about any information that we relied upon, but all of them are significantly non-conforming as a result of the application of the combined use and existing provision for fueling stations, which is based upon one space per fuel nozzle plus the convenience store use. So when you combine those, that's where the significant amount of parking. And I think when you look at what would be required, as I said, all the sites with the exception of what I think was the small Henny Penny at the, at 1090 Boston Post Road, that one becomes substantially more conforming, but isn't quite there. It's actually a fairly small property, smallest of all the ones that are affected. But again, brings it much closer to conformity. But we went to the planning commission last month. They recommended approval. They suggested that the amendment be expanded to include additional stations. What we told them, and I'll tell you tonight, we think that that's your decision. I think it's, makes it easy for you to think about this from the perspective of existing stations, but if you wanted in your wisdom to choose to expand it to other future stations, we have no objection to that. But again, I think it's, it keeps the initiative, as long as, as long as we deal with the existing stations, that's, that's what we're looking for here. So happy to answer any other questions you might have about the text amendment. Otherwise, we can, happy to go into the special exception as, as you would.
I have a two-part question. One has to do with the proposed wording and the proposed text change and how this get, how does that get along with the uniformity clause? Because the text specifies that such station was in existence on the effective date of this regulation. Now, we know we did something similar with regard to marijuana facilities and a date that was a historic marker. And in this case, again, how does, how does this jive with the uniformity clause of treating all uses in a particular district the same?
Because I think this is not necessarily establishing a regulation for the use as much as it is for how you allow that use, no different than I think if you decided to make a different setback in a particular, you know, for particular uses, buildings over a certain size. I think this isn't, isn't necessarily a regulation specifically related to the use. And I also think that to the extent that it could apply, then I think the issue is is that we're not treating any station that's in existence any different than any other future application. If you have a standard and it applies to any application in the future, that's consistent with uniformity. If you have something that applies to an existing, for example, like existing building, something like that, like we have here, then I think those, as long as you're not making an individualized decision on a specific property. I think if we, we made this much more narrow, I think you would have, you know, you might, we might open ourselves to a uniformity question, but I think treating existing and future isn't necessarily tied to the use itself.
We have in town several former gas stations which have not yet officially been abandoned. Does the new regulation apply to them? If this, if this were adopted, this regulation would apply to the non-abandoned, previously existing approved?
If they have convenience stores.
Pardon?
Not unless they had convenience stores. So if it's just a gas station, this regulation wouldn't apply. We're using this when it's a motor vehicle fueling station with a convenience store. So unless those former stations also had convenience stores, no.
Let's see. Is it, does the? Mine, mine, did not have a convenience store that used to pump gas. They don't anymore, but technically they could start pumping gas again under their prior approval. Charisma, Charisma Car Wash way down by Spring Brook Road. They used to be a gas station, but it was also a vacuum and car wash. No, I don't think it was a convenience store. No. So the mobile station closest to Mystic Market on the north side of the railroad tracks that had a convenience store and it stopped pumping gas, but recently there were new tanks. So it indicated to me that that gas station was going to be a gas station again. And so would, and we had approved an application for an upgrade of that gas station and convenience store. It may well have expired because it's been quite a number of years.
I believe they may have withdrawn it as well. Cause I had followed up to see what the status was and I believe they withdrew. The kiosk.
Yeah, the little kiosk is, that's not a convenience store, right? He's just taking the money.
I think he is.
So with, with that movement, with that former and potentially rejuvenated mobile station on the north side of railroad tracks close to Mystic Market, would that be subject to the new proposed text?
I think it would depend on whether it had been approved with a convenience store. I think if it was approved, you know, I know some people, you know, I've had other situations where there might be a gas station with a kiosk or a small, now let's call it a modern gas station with a typical, you know, my client, Karum Farms, 7-Eleven, those kinds of things where you have a true convenience store use with it. Maybe there might be accessory sales, but it's not approved for convenience store use. I think unless your records show that there was a convenience store use apply, I don't think it would apply.
What about the car wash that's on the same side of the road down 200 yards? It was just rebuilt.
Classic Carrance Car Wash.
But that means the current.
That means the current regulation. That does meet.
We, we, we not too long ago approved an upgrade for that and they expanded their convenience store and some other facilities, but I think that pretty well maxed out that side.
Correct. And, and that is consistent with the conversations that I had with staff. That was, that was my understanding as well, that that was recently approved, conforming to the regulations and why it's not on the chart. That was one of the other ones I brought. Did a visual of all the gas stations I could find in operation.
In your rationale for amendment, this amendment focuses exclusively on stations already in existence, limiting its ability, its applicability to future new developments. All right, then I have a question regarding the, in the first paragraph rationale for amendment, the last sentence has something about non-conformity inhibits modernization of these sites because the parking shortfall constrains the ability to even add a modest amount of floor area without a variance and to make aesthetic improvements such as landscaping or building upgrades. I don't understand how the non-conformity inhibits making aesthetic improvements such as landscaping or building upgrades. The, the, the existence of the non-conformity does not inhibit making the property more beautiful.
Practically it does. I think if you talk to most property owners, if you have a non-conforming site and you're going to be limited in your ability to make improvements to the site because you're non-conforming, you're not necessarily going to invest money to upgrade the site.
Money is not a factor in the zoning regulations. That's a, that's a decision that outside of zoning.
Correct.
And so this ability, it says ability, there is the ability to do it. There may not be the will, there may not be the profitability, but I contend that there is the ability to upgrade.
Legal versus practical, I would agree with you, that, that there would legally be the ability to enhance the landscaping on site. Practically, I don't think any business owner faced with a non-conforming site and an inability to make upgrades, physical infrastructure upgrades because of the non-conformity would necessarily want to do that. But legally, you are correct.
With regard to the frequency of delivery for goods sold in the convenience store?
Yes.
If the text were adopted, and as it refers in the document here regarding the text, there's a companion application. The companion application shows increase in product display area. How would, does that correlate with the frequency of delivery if there's an increase in the number and diversity of products sold on site? Wouldn't there necessarily be either more frequent or larger deliveries entailed to go with that expansion of customer purchasable?
No, because it would be coming off the same truck. So most of, so, so the deliveries are generally made by, I think everyone's familiar, you see a Coca-Cola distributor. So with a limited capacity in our existing store, sort of overlapping as an example, we can provide a certain number of, 10. I don't actually know our product mix by heart, but say, for example, we can sell 10 varieties of soda and that is all delivered by the same vehicle, even though that vehicle might carry 20 products, 20 different types of products. Now with additional capacity, we can do two different things that help enhance the business. One, expand the product offerings and that doesn't require another visit because we're already getting that truck coming to the site. And two, it allows us with additional storage area to be able to keep more of that product on site, which we're not able to do currently, thus getting more frequent deliveries in order to keep the shelf stock if we have additional storage space. Frankly, part of the reason why you see the rise of self-storage facilities with the rise of apartments, that people are looking for storage space. And so much like that, in a completely different context, you have additional area to store the products and thus we don't need to, excuse me, don't need to have the same number of deliveries or increase the deliveries because now we have the additional space.
We, we have seen it earlier and I just want to make note in this case that the companion application pending regarding the adoption of the text change has refrigerated area and that's, doesn't count that if the customer can access it, that's not storage. We had someone put forth the concept that in a grocery store, all the freezer stuff in the store is storage. Well, in a certain sense it may be, but that's a gross floor area because customers use that space.
Yes. And in fact, when we were here for the pre-application, we heard that comment and was part of why I spent a fair amount of time looking at what was on the assessor's records, looking at our floor plans, because ultimately I understood that there was a concern on the part of the commission members about where do we literally draw the line of what's customer accessible area, what's storage area? And thinking about it, the most direct way to deal with that was to get rid of it. And that's why we went to a parking standard that just dealt with gross floor area like all of your other uses in town. So number one, consistent with how you interpret parking throughout your zoning regulations, but then also eliminating, when we get into the special exception, that distinction or, you know, request for clarification of, well, are we going to count the first 12 inches as floor area? Are we counting 12 or, excuse me, 18 or whatever? That all goes away because we're just counting the gross floor area.
You don't have any more questions at this time? The proposed amendment is intended to apply towards those non-conformant properties that are in question, correct?
Correct.
This is my understanding, and this might be a question more to the commission, is that new construction would still have to adhere to the regulations as they are in the book and not included in this text.
Existing or former old parking calculations for convenience stores.
Right.
Correct. And, and that was why the planning commission asked about whether we had a position about or making a recommendation to you about expanding. Or making a recommendation to you about expanding that. Again, we we told them it it's it's not an issue for us so long as it deals with. The existing source and I think that keeps it simpler frankly for you, um, if you want to explore it, but we have no. No position other than that.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
In terms, Dustin, do you have any question?
Anyone else? Since this is a. Public hearing, is there anyone in the audience or online that would like to speak in for or against? This at the present time? Not seeing anyone in the audience, anyone online?
No.
No? We do have some correspondent, there are one correspondence, I believe.
Sure, so we did send out the referrals, we did hear back from the planning commission. That was November seventeenth. That they found it consistent with the plan of development as the term such in reference, they did suggest that. That they can make the regulation to include all gas stations and convenience stores for consistency. You do have a letter from the Lower Connecticut River Valley Council of Government from November thirtieth. Finding no adverse intermunicipal impacts. You have a letter from Marcy Valent at the Connecticut DEEP. And. We have reviewed it and it is generally consistent. The one. Request that you did get that was November eighth of twenty twenty-three from the Connecticut Gateway Commission. And looking at this, I I tend to always include the Gateway Commission because we've had a few times where. We've had a property or a map amendment or text amendment that includes a property and be tucked in the B two section of the gateway that I forget. So I seem to always add them to. The referral, they asked that this get continued to the regular meeting on December seventh. However, now missing, and I did get a call from Susan Beckton that I did not respond to. Or have a chance to, however, it appears that none of these properties are in the gateway.
Yeah.
Or that would be impacted.
Impacted by.
Texted him.
Neil? Okay, so. To be clear, you wouldn't need to continue this at their request. But the properties are not in the.
Would not impact property.
Gateway. Area, right?
Some hidden gas station I'm not aware of, that a gas stock with a convenience store.
Not hearing any additional questions, I'd like to make a motion to.
Close.
Close the public hearing, thank you.
Second.
Seconded by Jerry. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, extensions? Thank you. Are we prepared to deliberate on this this evening?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Therefore, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
In terms of deliberation, I'm sorry, in terms of deliberation, the deliberation should entail some conclusions about the. Designability, let's say, of the proposed text amendment. As being in 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 conformance with the plan of conservation and development as per the planning commission. It's consistent with our own zoning regulations and the comprehensive plan of zoning. And that it doesn't create any conflicts with. The existing regulations and therefore would be a positive addition to the regulations. Any other? Conclusions regarding the deliberations on the proposed text amendment?
No, that was good.
That was very good.
Thank you. Welcome back. You're back.
So based on that, then I I will make a motion.
To, oh, you have a motion?
Go ahead.
No, I make a motion to approve the petition to amend the old sacred zoning regulations to add a new section. Sixty-two point four point six point E point five related to parking requirements for. Motor vehicle fueling station with convenience store.
For existing. For existing stations.
With convenience store for existing stations as of the. The of this text adoption in.
December seventeenth.
December.
Seventeenth.
For an effective date, if you're choosing an effective date and you choose to.
No, it can't be a Sunday. Today is the, so the third, the tenth seventeen.
We would advertise it, but it would be.
You can't have an effective date on a Sunday. Trivia.
I believe it can be, we just can't, we're not advertising.
Make the effective date December eighteenth.
Eighteenth is a Monday.
Okay. I'll second that.
Seconded by Jerry Lewis. Any additional discussion by the commissioners? Not hearing any, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, extensions, passes five zero zero. Thank you very much.
I know if they change that, but that's like many years ago, we learned, don't do it on a Sunday.
There is definitely something about Sunday, I don't remember what it is, but.
I'll have to go to check that. Your culture memory.
Public hearing B. Atlanta's Fresh Market application for special acceptance use for the renovation of the existing motor vehicle fueling station. And convenience store and to construct an eight hundred square foot addition to the rear of the building. For walking cooler office space and utility area. Sixteen thirty Boston Post Road, map twenty-sixth, lot thirty-eight, Gateway Business B four district. Postal area management zone. Application is AMG Pub Two LLC agent Amy Suchens. And action is the open public hearing continue or close by January third, twenty twenty-four or no later than January seventh, twenty twenty-four. Bernie Sutcliffe?
Thank you, again, Amy Suchens representing AMG Pub Two LLC, we applicant on. On the special exception, site plan, coastal site plan. In connection with the redevelopment of the combined fueling station and convenience store at sixteen thirty Boston Post Road. And having just had the discussion about the text amendment, I will explain that yet, you know, as as what noted there. The constraint on the site had been the limitation of the existing parking. And with the approval of the text amendment, what we propose is to have, as noted in the discussion. Approximately eight hundred square foot addition to the rear of the building. The existing store is approximately sixteen hundred square feet, eight fuel pumps and the fuel canopy. The existing development is nonconforming with respect to the fuel canopy and the. Distance from a residential property boundary. We are not moving anywhere closer to the residential boundary, the addition is strictly outside the hundred foot. Required distance so that nothing there is is affected by the addition. And I just wanted to drag one other for technical item, a couple of technical items, and then I will turn the. Substantive presentational presentation over to Pablo Di Miguel, who is our architect, he is available online if we can. Include him and then also to Jim Bernadino to walk you through the. Site details. The couple of procedural things were as with respect to the text amendment, we went to the planning commission last month. We received a recommendation for approval from them. We were also at the architecture review board and I brought with me tonight one minor update. If anybody wants an additional copy, but I will explain to you what the change was. The ARB has asked for two things and for us to return to their meeting next week, so. I think we can get through most of our presentations tonight, but I do expect I get to come back to you again before the end of the year. Once we've been back through the ARB. The two things that the ARB asked for were. An updated sign plan and that is the only change to the elevation sheet you have. The calculation of the square footage of the sign was. Configured a little bit differently than what you, how the ARB and your zoning staff calculates the square footage. The sign is identical, it's just a smaller version, so that is what is on the updated plan, I can. If anybody wants that, I have extra copies, otherwise I'm happy to submit one for the record. And then the other item, and I think this is the one that's slightly more meaningful to the to the commission and the hearing. The ARB asked us to take another look at our landscaping plan. Because of the nonconforming of the site with the existing. Property lines, existing development and the location of the canopy. We really don't have a lot of area available for landscaping between the sidewalk, state right away, all those things. Jim can walk you through those, you know, exactly where the boundaries are. But they asked us to look at the landscaping plan, see if we could enhance it a little bit more, particularly on the. Side where the the freestanding sign and the. But the property where the freestanding sign is at the beginning of that, there's an existing shrubbery. Or whether we can do anything else to enhance that, so we are working on that landscaping plan, it is not yet ready. And like I said, we need to go back to ARB next week to get their sign up on the landscaping plan. So with that, I will turn it over to Jim first to walk you through the site details. If like I said, if anybody wants the updated elevation and then Pablo can walk you through the expansion and. Exterior renovations. It is the eastern. Slash southern, so the. It is the in the large rendering. The one that is adjacent to the building that says Atlantic Management.
Go by the.
He intended the building, right, so it's it's design is just a little bit smaller than what was depicted on the original. Submission, it is approximately.
Second to the last change.
Fifty. Seven, fifty-seventh square feet.
Thank you for the record, Jim Bernadino, with the AMG Engineering, where I support engineering group for development. The overall was as well straightforward and simple, we do have an existing convenience store, just less than sixteen hundred square feet. Associated with canopy upfront and four fueling dispensers, which I was going to pump say to acknowledge. We do have seventeen parking spaces on site existing. For all intensive purposes, the only physical site plan change that would be occurring to the. To the development that's composed is the installation of the proposed addition of just over eight hundred square feet, about eight hundred square feet.
Landscaping is not site plan?
Physical site plan improvement, we do have landscape improvements, I'll touch base on that. But there are no other parking improvements, site lighting or other related improvements that are necessary short of landscaping. Site lighting will remain the same, site traffic circulation, parking configurations will all remain the same. The site is serviced by an onsite sewage disposal system. That new updated system has been prepared and submitted to the house for review. So obviously that will be required before any type of building permits would be considered. To touch base on the comments that were received from the architectural design review board. On the ask that we look at what we physically do for some additional space landscaping on the site. So we took a step back and looked, previously there was no additional landscaping being proposed at the entrance to the site where the sign is. Right now, there is a pretty strong stand of ground cover evergreens, junipers on the side. That majority of that is actually located offsite on somebody's property. Once that side road, when you come in drops off, that heads off and the property line is right behind the sign. Virtually, I did relate the facts to the ARB that. There are existing day lilies and some perennials within that. They stated their concern or desire that we maybe update that for a little bit more color. So are the updated landscaping plan that we are in the process of preparing will have updated perennial plantings in front of the. Sign at the entrance of the site, you know, to be consistent with the other plantings along the the small. Landscape area that's directly in front of the site. We're also proposing on the northeast corner, there's a landscape island there. We're maintaining the majority of the vegetation there, but we're going to be implementing a tree as well, I believe we have dogwood trees. With some shrubs and perennials as well. The plantings across the front are going to be a combination of. You know, flowering perennials, some flowering shrubs and even evergreen shrubs with the. He very holy that's being proposed out there. The question that was brought up was, well, what else could we do? So we know that we're going to be adding some additional landscaping at the sign, as I mentioned. On the western part of the site, there's a slope that's very well stabilized right now to establish grass. And it does have some relatively large shade trees there, so along that eastern, western property line. We're not proposing any improvements, it would be more detrimental to take out something that's been established for a while to introduce something new. So there's no. Proposed modifications, there's a couple substantial trees on that slope, so we're going to add approximate locations of those trees. Just so that we have something a little bit more substantial at being shown on the landscape plan. At the request of the architectural review board. One area that they had question on as well as what's going on is at the back of the building. So at the back of the building, obviously there's a lot of overgrowth and some. Naughty trees that were recently removed in hopes that it would save some deceptive system that's back there along that sloped area. Unfortunately, it's all that had to be removed, the vegetation, and we are going to be placing deceptive system. So that whole back area, we're going to have the landscape architect. Increase or propose on his landscaping plan. The sloped area which is on our site, when you look at the back, there is a flat area of grass. That's primarily the neighbor's property, the the flat grass area where the slope goes up, which is a little ratty. We're going to propose to clean that up and. Seed with a low maintenance seed with, which would be a either a wildflower mix or a conservation mix. That would be hardy, will be able to, you know, thrive in this element and provide some sort of aesthetics. In the back as well while maintaining the low, low maintenance criteria for that. Also, we're going to highlight the southwest, southeast corner of the site. There's some stands of trees that are going to be remaining and protected. So those are ranging from six to even twenty-four inches in diameter. There's about fifteen trees back there kind of cluttered together that are going to be maintained.
So the, on page eight, point two zero one, point zero zero. And point two, that would be the. Southeast, so it's southeast portion of the site to the left of the building in the view on that page I cited there. There's an old Volkswagen Beetle in front of two substantial trees, are those trees existing or are those proposed?
Those would be existing.
Do they show on, I don't, I didn't see them, on which set of plans do those trees care?
Well, we don't have a located kind of plan, we're going to be updating those to approximate those locations in the back of the property. I'll take a closer look just to make sure that those trees can be saved with what's required off the back. Well, I'll take a closer look just to make sure that those trees can be saved with what's required off the back.
They plan showing existing vegetation as in our regulations that.
Yeah, we showed it as a tree line. Um so there are definitely a couple spots where we can show the existing vegetation. Um and we're going to take a closer look rather than just showing it as a clump of trees. We're going to try to specifically show those locations on the. You know, to the best of our ability um and identify those existing and those existing that can remain.
And the uh the ARB is dealing with the uh appearance of the wall on the. South side there, that's forty-five, that's greater than forty-five feet. We have a section in our neighborhood pattern in the building design, section sixty-eight point two point four facade. And. A lot of that page pertains to that wall of the building, which will be visible from the adjacent line.
Yes.
But they are, they are these on that.
Uh ARB did not raise that specifically, but I understood that there was, that came up during our um pre-application discussion was about that wall. So um when you get to the um uh architectural presentation, we can address that.
Yeah, and I I believe I may not be a hundred percent verse. I'm just going back to my memory for our first and formal meeting. Uh and I believe it was being visible from the right way as well, even though it may be abutting the property. So um that may be one of the components that uh Pablo may be able to touch base on a little bit more. Um with that, that's all I basically had for the uh proposed site improvements. Um if there's still questions at the moment, we can figure out the problem to kind of run through uh his uh architectural overview.
Sidewalk is, I see a sidewalk on the sheet C dash three point zero. Is that that that's that's in the in the state right away as proposed as part of this plan?
Um it's in state right away. That's existed. So it's an existing um sidewalk that will remain.
The if the exist- the existing fence along the eastern property line of. Whose fence is that? This site or the neighbors?
Uh that would be our our site.
And so if there's any anything hanging on either side of the fence, it's your responsibility, such as signage and. Beer ads and things like that.
I would say definitely on our side. If there's something on the other side, we may not be aware of it. So.
Your offense.
We may not be aware of it, but I would say, yeah, we would have the ability to to remove it if it's uh not warranted.
That the soil erosion sedimentation star waddles, is that instead of bales, saying that what's that in a mesh bag kind of thing?
Yeah, it's a tube of sock. You know, you then you could get them straw or you could even get mulch with with the sock. They come all rolled up.
I learned about a different term. I hadn't seen it as a waddle.
Yeah, um yeah, sometimes they're a waddle or a sock.
Lighting, um previously existing drop lens lighting under the canopy. Is that still drop lens or is that recessed and um?
Um currently checked, no, put your. If you know the drop lens or not. Yeah, I I don't have that.
It's a chance for lighting improvements as well. So there are no wall packs. We'll we'll look at the lighting plan in detail when we get there.
Are you requesting a lighting plan or?
Is there one?
No, there is not one, because there there is no proposed modification to the site.
If there, then there's no, no additional lighting or no change in light.
Right, there's no additional, there's no changing one.
But if there's drop lenses, could we get an upgrade to? To to get to get rid of the drop lenses and their spillage across the property line?
We we can take a look at that, but.
Yes, we can take a look.
Yeah, uh exactly. I don't know to to what magnitude is uh that's out there.
All right, I don't have anything else.
Okay, Pablo, I think it may be your time.
So um the, I mean, the architectural portion of the building um isn't actually very. Very straightforward, but we are doing is um we're keeping the building almost as is.
Can you speak up a little? It's hard to hear you.
Oh, let me see if I can make this a little bit louder. So can you hear me better now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so basically, uh what we're doing with the existing building is. Um the existing building is a is a brick. Um exposed brick uh building and uh we are leaving the same openings. The only change on the front facade will be that we are eliminating the, there is only a single pane door. And we are making that a um storefront and in one of the big. Uh openings, we are making a double ADA um entry. So that would be in terms of the changing of the openings on the front, on the front facade. And then the other addition that we're doing into the existing building is that on the west elevation, we are adding a window. And I can, and and a door. And that, and I can tell you now uh uh why we did that. Um the other thing we are doing is um. We are making that extension on the back, the eight hundred square foot extension, and we are re-cladding the whole building with a hardy board like a lap side. Like a gray, it's a gray uh hardy board plank. Which is uh the color that Atlantis has in their branding. And. The rest, we are like just refinishing all the trims around the window, but we are leaving um all the openings as as they are. All the equipment and all the pipes around the building are staying too. Uh and we are just doing repairs to the roof. And uh you know, any, any other part of the other, of the facade that needs that. In terms of the question that I heard before regarding the. The zoning regulations regarding to the facade, especially on the south elevation. So the south elevation, uh it is visible from the side on the back. Uh it is actually raised. Uh quite a bit. I mean, there's like a big drop off. There, right now, there is a, there's like a chain link fence. Uh so what we are proposing is um since that that area, there is no really. Any livable space or anything on the building. What we are proposing is basically taking advantage of that requirement of having to set back the building. Because of the closeness to the residential um um uh site. So we are breaking down that facade that is between forty and eighty feet into into two. Uh one portion which is like around forty-five feet and a and a smaller portion which is set back almost ten feet in. And. And we believe that 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 will, that will be uh in compliance with the regulations of the zoning. And the other part is in the west elevation, which we are also creating a larger facade, which is uh over forty feet. And and what we are proposing to break down that facade is adding that new window. Um which will will be into the attendant area. If you see, I don't know if you have a a copy of the plan with you. Or the proposed plan. And. But uh so those are the two basically um. Two things that we we are doing to try to comply with that uh with that part of the zoning regulations regarding the facades.
Is that it?
Yeah, I think that is.
Um I would, I would have a couple. Questions on the latest drawing that you provided. Um I see that the the roof over the pumps is red in color.
That's the existing canopy.
Existing canopy. Can that be matched to the new color of the building? I'm sorry.
We we can look at it if if you want it to, you want us to find out whether it can match, match the new colors.
The new color scheme, please.
Kind of makes sense. The building is such an improvement.
Right.
Yeah.
Um the other thing I'd like to point out is that on the windows, um there's no signage. That goes into the wi- windows or um sign with products on sale or stuff. Other during any clear.
Correct.
Yeah. There was something that was mentioned also. I think it was not our our application, but we, it was talked about during the. Architectural Review Board and the last week, we spoke. The requirement of of having the the windows clear and uh no films or no nothing of that.
Correct. Any other? Questions from commission? Do you, you have uh me coming up with ARB next?
We are back at ARB next Monday with the revised sign plan.
Mm-hmm.
And then the landscape plan update. Um we're optimistic that we'll be able to get those in and. Get their approval so we can come back to you at your December eighteenth meeting.
Correct. So um. We can continue this to our eighteenth meeting?
Yeah.
With your approval?
I would, I would request that you continue the meeting to the eighteenth, so that way early if there are any questions about. The landscaping plan and anything else that we've um. Canopy or any other, um if there's anything else or comments that anybody else um wanted to see incorporated. Obviously, happy to hear those because we we have the time to um. Address those or look at any other. The one suggestion would be it's a public hearing. I don't know if any folks are.
Right. Since it is a public hearing, if there's anybody in attendance this evening who would like to speak out in uh opposition or either in the audience. Or online.
We do.
We have a hand raised. Ms Connolly? Can you hear us?
Kathy?
Can you hear me now?
We can, yes.
Okay, great. Um I I would just offer, I'm in, I Kathy Connolly, sixty North Cove Road. I'm in the landscape business and the only thing I would suggest to the commissioners is that the landscape plan as proposed. Um is extremely complex and I think it will be very difficult to keep it alive. And good looking under the site conditions. Um I I specialize in naturalized landscapes and I heard the words of that a wildflower planting. Um and I, I know how hard those are to establish and keep alive. And so I would just simply um. Advise you to think hard about the durability of the landscape plan as proposed. I know that these days, um a lot of people are finding it interesting to request native plantings. And naturalized plantings and I certainly um more than encourage that. But I don't think that it's widely understood how to select the plants or to keep them alive for the long term. So I'm just simply suggesting to you that you be very cautious in accepting the landscape plan as it was described here. I have not read it. But as it was described, I would be very cautious about the durability of that plan as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
And those details will come on the eighteen.
Correct.
Which are not currently accurate, I know.
Correct. So what, we're in the process of revising the landscape plan. It should be done at the end of this week so that we can get it to ARB. Assuming that's, they don't have other requests or we make any other changes.
Right.
I'll get the copy um submitted so that we have the opportunity to see the updated landscape and plan and then we can walk through that on the eighteen.
Good.
Great.
And best to keep a public hearing.
Yeah. But just um, did I go through the referral?
No.
So just some housekeeping, uh we sent out the referrals. We've heard back a favorable response. From the Planning Commission on November seventeenth. We've heard back favorably from River Cog November thirtieth, Marcy Bullant of Deep November thirtieth. We heard back from ARB and their request to continue. That's where we all.
Do we have to take a vote for continue? So um at this point, I'd like to make a motion to continue the application for um a land fresh market. Which I feel accept news as outlined in the under public um hearings. Uh to our meeting of December eighteenth.
Second.
Seconded by Jerry Lewis. Is there any further discussion needed? Not hearing any, or take a vote. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You too. Continuing the public hearing onto item C, petition to amend the zoning regulation section fifty-three. Drive through windows for financial institutions, pharmacies, indoor restaurants or other food and beverage, beverage establishments. Petition or old safer zoning commission action in public hearing, continue or close by January third or later than January seventh, twenty twenty-four. Everybody's received the latest information in their package um that. Um. Has the current uh. Text amendment that we've uh spent the past, almost the past year in review. Um and we have received, um Chris, I'll go, I'll let you go through the um. Correspondence that we've received.
Wait one second.
Sure, no problem.
Packing up some of the previous. And so the. Looking at the patient. So the zoning commission sent referrals out on October twenty-fourth. Uh they've heard back from Marty Bullin at Deep November thirtieth, the lower Connecticut. River Valley River Cog, we heard from them on November twenty-ninth, see how they referral response. From the Economic Development Commission and the Planning Commission began their review on November fifteenth. Um they continued that as a result of a letter from Attorney Royson with eleven points. Um that we asked the planning commission to consider. Uh the planning commission. Does have that eleven points um as a homework. They were going to review those individually on their own. Um in the interim, Attorney Royston also sent um. Regulation changes to address those eleven points in his letter. Um and I believe you should have received that in email format and in your packet from me. Um as well as um I actually sent both of those referral or memos. As well as a request from November twenty-ninth, uh which was hand-delivered, requesting that you continue. Um. The matter to the January eighth hearing. Um and then you also have a letter from Attorney Matt Willis. That was sent to you um this evening, which you should have and they were printed. Give a copy for Attorney Royston. And I can read it um pretty much um in response to Attorney Royson's letter um. There was a request. I asked and we decided to have it in writing. Uh it's addressed to me as the town planner and zoning officer to confirm my interpretation that the zoning commission can vote. Upon a zoning commission initiated text change application tonight based upon the following facts. On October twenty-fourth, the proposed text change to section fifty-three referred to the planning commission. For report pursuant to Connecticut general statute, section eight dash three A B. The application was taken up by the planning commission. The application was taken up by the planning commission on November fifteenth and was deferred for a decision on a report to the planning commission meeting of December sixth. This evening, the zoning commission is scheduled to open the hearing for this application. The planning commission has not acted within thirty-five days. The zoning commission could vote this evening by failing to act within thirty-five days of the planning commission and that would be considered to have approved the text of the zoning commission or approve the text, or the zoning commission could continue its public hearing to December eighteenth. If the planning commission issues a report by then, the report would be considered by the zoning. That's
the
All that.
For the sake of this public hearing, you you mentioned the um wishlist that we went through and we've had a number of workshops that led to this iteration uh being the the one that survived all the comments and questions in the in the several workshops previously. And I just want to make sure that all of the work that went into this to get it to this stage is recognized and uh part of of this public hearing record as well. That this is not something that was just dreamed up in in the in the last several days that this has taken us quite some time to get here. And we extend instituted and extended the moratorium on drive-through windows in order to assure that we could get this product to this point.
Correct.
I have uh I have a sort of a philosophical question about the the wording that is uh mentioned numerous times in here that the drive-through windows uh um are committed by special exception permit as an accessory used to service customers in motor vehicles and a drive-through window for financial institutions, pharmacies, and indoor restaurants or other food and beverage establishments. What other food and beverage establishments are there that could have drive-through windows other than indoor restaurants? If we look later in in this packet, we have the definitions of the various terms. Where is that? And same definition for a drive-through window appears again. And then following that, there's restaurant, fast food, and it says the indoor retail sale. So that would be an indoor restaurant. And next is restaurant full service, the indoor retail sale of food to the public. Again, that's an indoor restaurant. Restaurant outdoor is not an indoor restaurant. And it says at the last of that definition, uh, all seating will be located outdoors and on the same lot. But is that eligible as a non-indoor retail sale indoor restaurant to have a drive-through window? Can you have a drive-through window at an outdoor restaurant? That's one question. And then restaurant takeout. It says indoor retail sale of food. That's also an indoor restaurant. And at the very end of that definition, it says will not have an accessory drive-through window. So in my research, there was a a town in Connecticut that had a drive a drive-through window at a bakery. Which was not necessarily a restaurant, but they baked goods and they had a drive-through window. I didn't see that our regulations would permit such a thing because the bakery would not qualify as an indoor restaurant. However, a bakery could be one of those other food and beverage establishments. And so could you have a commercial kitchen with a drive-through window? It's not a restaurant. And to me, it's not a restaurant if it doesn't have indoors, it doesn't have seating. Alright, so our definitions are a little different, but they specify indoor retail sale of food. So my question is can an outdoor restaurant have a drive-through window? They have to have a building of seven hundred and fifty square feet in order to have a a drive-through window. Right? So once you get to that point, then we get into the mess of whether or not that would be an indoor and outdoor restaurant. Would it? What would that be? What would that be? I don't know. But my problem is that the definition itself for a drive-through window includes other food and beverage establishments that would be different from indoor restaurants. So what other food and beverage establishments do we have in mind that could have drive-through windows? Or should we just take those words out every time they appear?
Other food and beverage.
Yeah.
Second, other food and beverage establishment?
Yeah.
So I think that language which has been in the regulations for probably at least twenty years was to address coffee shops or other shops that have ice cream and slurpees and and whatever else that would go through the window that may not necessarily be classified as a restaurant.
Well, that's.
So I think that's what the other food and beverage, that's where it came from. That's my understanding.
That would not be a takeout restaurant?
Well, if a restaurant I I guess, and I think at one point the zoning commission had a very in-depth workshop talking about the difference between restaurants and fast food restaurants and so forth many, many years ago. Talking about if fast food was somewhere where you came, you've been in and you you got your food primarily in a wrapper or on a paper plate of some sort, it was pretty much disposable. So the question becomes if you have a coffee, is that a restaurant? If you're not having, say, you're just having a beverage or food, and that was my understanding of why it was always called food and beverage establishments. Because a coffee shop or a a smoothie store could say that they're not a restaurant. They just sell beverage. That was
Right.
my thought of how you interpreted it all these years.
So.
But.
In 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 my earlier research for drive-through windows, I found a drive-through coffee business in Seattle that had no customer access to the building. It was only a drive-through. Would that be permissible in Old Sabre? But you know, if they if they had a seven hundred and fifty square foot building and no customers were allowed inside, and it was just a drive-through window business, would that be something that these definitions would foresee?
I don't think so because throughout the whole workshop session, it was talked about was having an indoor restaurant versus having a chaos type of a situation where you have someone who the kitchen would work inside and handed out the window. At one point, I think during the moratorium and during the whole workshop, we talked about making drive-throughs a primary use and not an accessory use.
Right.
We did have a regulation at one point during the moratorium and drafting, and the commission decided that they did not want to have kind of a I guess a drive-through is a primary use in a restaurant. And I think the only reason that outdoor restaurant is in this text is when we were going through the moratorium, I pulled every section in the regulations that dealt with indoor, outdoor restaurants, takeout.
Right.
An outdoor restaurant was added and somewhere during the discussion, not that it relates to or is allowed to have an outdoor restaurant, said there's no indoor food and beverage established and there's no indoor restaurant, that the only change that was made to that was for, it was added for full-service outdoor restaurants. All seating will be located outdoors and on the same lot. But I don't think the intent by having restaurant outdoor in this text was to allow or permit for an outdoor restaurant to have a drive-through because you don't have a building of seven hundred and fifty square feet to go through to have that. So it's there, it's included, but when we pulled every section of the regulations dealing with drive-throughs, parking, restaurant, indoor, outdoor, accessory, primary, use, special exception uses in the sections where it was permitted, we took that text and then use that as a basis to start the workshop for the moratorium. So the way that I read it, I think the way it was intended was to allow for drive-throughs when you have for restaurants and pharmacies, when you have an indoor lobby, some type of an indoor cafe, an indoor restaurant for the consumption of food or purchase of food by or prescriptions and presentment of those inside a building of seven hundred and fifty square feet and that it's not an accessory. So outdoor wasn't intended to be included. We did spend a good eight months on this, so it's always good to double check.
Okay. If 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 you can see it clear enough to not have an enforcement issue, then that sounds okay.
Well, if you think there's something, or the commission thinks there's something that we need to clarify further, it's probably the time to make it stronger now.
In the uh let's see, what do we, one, two, three, four? Five, five pages in, it's section sixty-two, access, circulation, parking, and loading. And sixty-two point four point six, point F, point two, it says restaurant with takeout window, lockup, or drive-through window. This has to do with parking, so it's it's a restaurant could have a takeout window or the restaurant could have a drive-through window. Or a restaurant could have both. But if it has a takeout window. Oh, takeout restaurants will have limited or no seating. Okay, okay, it's okay. Never mind. It's like a onion. There's another layer.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And in the course of investigation, when we had the meeting where we called in uh drive-through, restaurant, pharmacy, financial businesses. We had some, we had some discussion around these things and we we learned a lot, including minimum stacking space discussions and the the volume of traffic generated varies quite a lot from each of those three types. And then in the in the in the food drive-through windows, the uh even the DOT, Connecticut DOT recognizes that different drive-through businesses have different stacking requirements. So I also learned that East Lime has a minimum separation between drive-through windows. And there's section twenty point two six, part K. The East Lime Reg says no restaurant or food service establishment with a drive-through facility shall be built or established upon a lot or premises within a radius of a thousand feet of any part of any other building, lot, or premises used for such purpose. And a somers has fifteen hundred feet separation distance. So our separate minimum separation distance is uh no greater than two other towns in Connecticut that have that. So I'm just covering the the research that went into the development of the regulations proposed by this commission. Let's see. Other than that, I my uh I don't have any any further questions pertaining to this, the latest draft for this pub, for this public hearing tonight, the revised text revised to October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Looks good to me.
Something else, Bob?
No, that's okay.
This this took a lot of work.
Absolutely.
It continues to. Any other commissioners have comments, observations? Justin or? Do you have any?
No, I have the muller.
Okay. No one else?
I I have a question. What about drive-throughs in a pedestrian's zone or pedestrian node?
No.
Um, will there be different regulations for drive-throughs where we're encouraging people to walk around? My thoughts are playing the road.
Yeah. That's been taken into consideration with the with the regulations. Um, pedestrian node um, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, here, that um take priority as 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 the regulation versus the text amendment for drive-through windows. Okay, so we strive not to have interference with pedestrians and vehicles where where possible, right? Um a perfect case is the Dunkin' Donuts, the new Dunkin' Donuts by uh uh the old Smithfield that there is a crossover there. We strive not to have that happen consistently. Sometimes you can't avoid it. Uh, but the regulations as we've amended it for our proposed amendments and taking that into consideration is to eliminate the pedestrian interaction as much as possible.
And would they be the curb cuts as much as possible?
Well, curb cuts are uh uh decided by DOT.
Curb cuts have to be approved by the local office first. And then if it's a state road, the state approves it or says for some reason they don't approve it. But they don't get into that if it hasn't already been through the local commission. State doesn't want to get into
Okay.
approving a curb cut and then having it, having to do it twice because somebody moved it. So they they look at it after it's been handled locally. And if it's not a state road, the selectman's office handles curb cuts in Old Sabre.
Correct.
On town roads.
So so a good example is the sidewalks that went in where we had grants, where you had large expanses of people just pulling in and out. And if you look at Route One, where a lot of that massive curb cuts have sidewalks and they've been narrowed down to smaller entryways, and that's a policy of DOT. It's something that the planning commission, our road regulations encourage, is trying to minimize curb cuts as much as possible. So you don't have those plazas where people are pulling in and out and create dangerous situations, especially where you're encouraging people to walk or bike or bike.
My other question was um having one drive-through window per lot. And the lot size is ninety thousand square feet. Um, section fifty-three N.
A ninety thousand square foot lot?
Right. So only one drive-through establishment per lot or that's ninety thousand feet? Or what if it's a larger space? Like Max's Place is a huge lot. So I didn't know if it was one per lot or?
It's permitted on any one lot having not less than ninety thousand square feet. So would be one.
Okay.
Since this is a um public hearing, um anyone in the audience or online wishing to speak in favor or opposition, please identify themselves. David.
Alright, so here. My name is David Gordisman. I'm the attorney for Max's Place LLC. Um, with me tonight, um, are Ron Lyman, who's the principal of Max's Place LLC, and also two adjacent properties. of Max's Place LLC, and also two adjacent properties um which he owns and uh different LLC names. One of those properties was the former building for John Donnelly's accounting office, uh that building quite a while ago was demolished. The building further to the east uh housed a motel. And Mr. Lyman, who company also acquired that particular piece of property. And that building also has been uh demolished. The other person here tonight is Ed Mian, um who is our uh planning consultant. And who will be speaking here tonight uh really depends upon uh and what we present uh is the written request of uh November twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three. Uh to continue uh this uh public hearing. And the uh reasons are are stated in the uh letter. First of all, the um uh has Chris Goss, the reported view, uh the uh planning commission uh first considered the uh uh the resolution uh for the petition at its November fifteenth uh meeting. Um at which I presented them um uh some material similar to what you have. And at that uh meeting, they recognized that uh this was a great deal with information uh for them to seek to uh digest at that particular meeting. Um and so they continued it and to the meeting on uh uh next Wednesday. Next Wednesday, two days from now. You received the letter from uh uh Mad Willis regarding the statutory uh requirement of thirty-five uh days notice prior to the um the public hearing and um I'm not gonna argue with his opinion on that because I don't think that's the important fact. I I think that as another uh elected commission uh of this town, which has a function particularly in uh the adoption of regulations um that you should continue uh the meeting in order to hear whatever uh they have to say uh about it. Um also, um the uh we have requested uh the board of selectmen uh to comment on this uh regulation. And the reason why we requested them to comment is because I think this regulation has a significant uh effect on the um economy of the uh of the town. And certainly it's within their function to bring uh that to your contention. So that's on the agenda for their meeting of the uh, I think it's the twelfth uh week from tomorrow. And again, um our request is that you uh allow for them to respond. I have no idea how they'll respond, even if they'll choose to respond. But I do think that you um should not foreclose that uh that opportunity. And Gateway uh has also requested uh you to um continue the meeting. There is um a small part of the um uh B four district, which is in uh the Gateway. But I think you should also take into account that um there is um significant portion of the B two um district is within Gateway. Now, you would have chosen to uh in your draft to delete a drive-through uh window as a permitted use in the in the B two. But um I I submit to you that uh it should not be a foregone conclusion that lines have been made up uh before the conclusion of the public hearing. And if you decided that you uh would not exclude it in the B two uh simply not adopt that cross-out section in what you have, which deletes it in the B two, then it could have significance for Gateway. And I think, again, um they should be uh given the opportunity uh to uh inquire. I fully um uh recognize the amount of time, effort, that is going in from the uh commission. And uh you uh when you uh considered to extend the moratorium. I don't know if you recall, but our request was not that you um not extend it because we recognize it may be difficult to have your public hearing and to do things during December, during a holiday period of time. And I I simply suggested if you uh uh figured that your public hearing could come in uh uh January, that would cer- certainly be a a reason for extension beyond December thirty-first, but uh you could not uh be holding this up for a great deal of time. So I repeat that as saying I do think that you should uh extend the uh public hearing. And I think you should extend it to your uh January meeting. Now, uh because this is a commission-generated petition, you do not have um uh any limitations on um how long you hold the uh hearing open, unlike uh previous application where there you have until the thirty-fifth, thirty-five days expires on uh I think the the seventh, which is the Sunday your meeting, uh first meeting in uh January, I think is on the on the eighth.
We have, we have quite a bit of business coming in, so that's something.
Yeah, and you had uh uh mentioned to me that uh the uh also your meeting of the eighteenth might be full, and if you?
So I didn't mean it to mean full, meaning that for some reason the boards and commissions, I know it's the holidays. Um people think we're canceling the meetings because we're getting close to the holidays, which granted, it is nice not to have a meeting Christmas Eve, however, we have business, so at at this point, we have business scheduled for the eighteenth, and so they're not full, it's.
I I'm not, I'm not trying to uh make a, make a choice. Um but again, uh my request is whether it be for your meeting of the eighteenth or the meeting of the third, uh I I would re- uh request that the uh uh that it um that be uh decided because that's gonna have an effect upon what we present to you tonight. I would uh like to be able to defer testimony by um uh Ed Mian until he has completed uh his written report. That that report can be filed before the meeting, so you have an opportunity to look at it beforehand. That's uh one of the reasons why I request either either date. I would prefer the the third just for uh um reasons of what we're wanting to present, to make sure that it's in a a form that you can get it a week before your meeting, so in your packets. So that means if it's the meeting of the eighteenth, we go back to uh December uh eleventh, which is when we based it from now. So um I um the uh petition is not only extremely important, but it's extremely um complicated. And uh Max's Places uh had just did not oppose your granting, as I said. They were just wanting to make sure that at some point there could be a full uh review of the of regulation. And they, um I think if you uh continue that, uh you have the uh best of both worlds for the commission. I think you have the opportunity to digest the materials of you have received. You have the opportunity to get a report from our planning consultant in advance of the meeting so that you can ask whatever questions you think are appropriate to uh to ask him. And uh what you have received, this document I believe in the materials. And I appreciate uh uh the fact that Chris Goss had us uh then putting uh this material on your uh on the website and that it also has gotten to the commission. One thing about this is this is uh a product which is still still being revised first. Since this was uh was prepared when it was prepared, that uh we had not yet uh reviewed the letter from the Economic Development Commission. And there are several um uh recommendations uh in that document that we wanted to incorporate into any alternative amendment. Also, uh the River Cog received the letter from the uh from the River Cog. And it has expressed um uh a concern about the um aspect of the pedestrian note. And I think what they have are saying and is that, okay, if your property is in the pedestrian zone and you are requiring your regulation that the building, the building be a hundred feet setback. Then you're making it more difficult for pedestrians to uh to get to that. And they said, we understand you are seeking to uh what they call the unwanted proliferation of uh drive-through restaurants. That's that's a term they they use, and I I think there um is um some of that, certainly to limit the proliferation of uh fast food uh uh restaurants. But I think that can be accomplished uh in a in a better way, and we would like the opportunity to uh incorporate those changes into this document and to get this document revised, updated to include um information. And to include whatever may be observations from the planning commission, observations uh from the board of uh selectmen, or even things that we heard tonight. And um one of the things that I've heard, Commissioner Friedman, was the uh we have other uh food and beverages establishments. And my thought uh was we also have uh a definition for pub in there, and I thought, well, that might be included as a another food and beverage establishment. But you raised one, which I had not thought of, which is uh a bakery, which I think probably would come in under the uh definition of food and beverage establishment. But um then we don't seem to have any specific regulation for the other food and beverage establishments. We have it in your draft for restaurants of all types. There's three defined types. And um uh financial institutions and pharmacies. And I think that is something that ought to be, ought to be uh cleared up and some information that may be provided, maybe assistance to do that. And I uh also uh thank you, provide you the opportunity to have your uh your own attorney uh make uh make comment on what may be presented or any prospective uh So um may I respectfully request that you uh take a uh vote on continuing the public hearing. I don't close it tonight, but continue it uh to whichever day you feel is uh is best. So that it will limit what will be um not a full and proper
Are are you not prepared to present tonight?
I am not prepared to present in full. And particularly be able to present um a updated revised regulation, which I don't want to give to you orally. And I think uh I would, if you allow me, I can go through tonight the um items which are, we think are essential uh to be changed. I would limit basically to a quick review of of those items. And then we would go from there.
Just one question, I see you've got your engineer and your traffic engineer. And I know we did hear from your uh during the workshop portion of this. And is there anything that they can present since you have them here tonight to start?
Not not tonight.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to think of as much as to get into the record.
I would like to personally, yeah, give, prefer to hear from them than from me, but I would limit basically what I, to to me, to just present you just some on the uh points that we have raised. on the, uh, points that we have raised, uh, eleven points which are of, of real significance. And there was a question was, um, uh, raised, um, by your commissioner that, uh, does this mean you can only have one restaurant on a lot which may be much larger than, uh, ten thousand square feet? I just wanna go over that because the answer is that if the lot is less than ninety thousand square feet, you can't have any. If it is over ninety thousand square feet, you can have one restaurant and you can have one financial institution with it under the proposed grid. But if the lot is considerably larger, um, uh, back to its place of seventeen acres at this point, um, plus the additional land to the, uh, east, which we would hope to merge into it, to make it, uh, one, one, if, if that lot could meet the other dimensional requirements. One of which is a sideline of, um, of four hundred feet. It's interesting, the sideline of the motel property, which we would hope to merge, um, is of three hundred ninety-five feet. You don't wanna have to, um, gerrymander lot lines in order to meet that requirement. But those are, those are things that we would like to, uh, be able to, uh, provide to you in a, uh, a reasonable fashion. I don't know, uh, how much chance there is then to digest this. This is very, very, uh, ex- extensive. And, uh, uh, I would also like to be able to, uh, uh, provide you, uh, with some schematic understanding of how revisions to the regulations, uh, uh, could work. Um, we are, we are not, and then when I say we, I'm speaking for, uh, my client, and I'm speaking for myself personally, in a way, uh, are not opposed to the concept of, uh, not having what I heard in the workshop. You don't wanna be like rotten, middle-down, having, uh, multiple drive-through restaurants close to the road on very small windows. Uh, and part of this, uh, proposal basically creates pads, a ninety thousand square foot pad within a lot in which you would have , uh, just one, uh, uh, restaurant, uh, and one financial institution. But for a second, one, you would have to have a, uh, separate on the property pad of ninety thousand square feet with a minimum lot width of a hundred and fifty feet. Hundred and fifty feet is the minimum lot width um, in the before. If you don't have water, if you have water, it's only a hundred feet. But our regulation says, okay, for this pad, let's not have it, um, the width, um, be too, uh, uh, non-restrictive. Let, let's make it, uh, wider. One fifty is a, to me is a logical, uh, way to do that. Um, the, um, also, uh, there is a question about the, uh, pedestrian, uh, pedestrian note. Um, and your, uh, draft regulation does, um, that, um, uh, no, um, like no liner buildings in the, uh, pedestrian note. In other words, uh, your regulation now says your building is a hundred feet back and the pedestrian note, um, aspects of it, um, uh, don't apply. Under your, um, your current reg- regulations, this commission has the discretion of whether or not it will reduce a setback from the required fifty feet. Um, there may be a question of uniformity when you have, uh, in the district, a, uh, fifty-foot setback for everything except for one use, one use. You move it back another fifty feet. Um, so, um, we, we, uh, really are, um, working, uh, on a schematic plan which can, uh, operate, uh, to accommodate pedestrians, to accommodate bikers, to accommodate a bus stop for the regional traffic, uh, transit district, so that those are probably where your main pedestrian will want to Boston Post Road are gonna come from. Um, so we would really like the opportunity to show you, uh, a, you know, draft regulation like this, but improve and to take in whatever comments we have, uh, uh, we, we get. Um, so, yes, um, I am not prepared to provide you what I think is a full, complete, brought out, not thrown together, uh, presentation. And I think this is an important, uh, matter. Um, and it has such an important impact, uh, potential impact on this community. I think that it should be continued. So just, uh, Matt DeVore, who's of the Big Y family, uh, in a letter, uh, earlier, unrelated, uh, it said, shopping centers, uh, drive-through yes, I guess, are important to the vitality and the life of the, um, shopping center because there are, uh, so many more, uh, online shopping. And you do not, you do not, I don't, and I'm sure you don't, want to see a shopping center with more and more vacancies because that circumstance and vacant areas.
We still haven't grabbed the.
He's private, so.
See this guy looking at the clock?
Oh, mute, mute, mute please. I don't know who it is.
So, um, uh, would you take a vote? Anybody has any other questions on that?
Well, I want to see if there's anybody online that has a question. I guess not online, um. Commissioners, do you have any question of Attorney Royston this evening?
We have, uh, so we have a letter dated today, I think, from, from Matt Willis.
Correct.
Regarding, uh, continuation of the public hearing.
Right.
My question would stem from the, the date, uh, that the Planning Commission got the referral from us. Was that more than thirty-five days ago? They had a chance to give us, send us a report within a thirty-five day time window, but they didn't.
So the Planning Commission, um, got the referral on October twenty-fourth. Um, it went to, um, their meeting on, I believe it was the fifteenth. Um,
Well, their, their meeting schedule is their business and they had a referral.
From Attorney.
It would be on the agenda.
They received comments.
Have a special meeting, but they have had thirty-five days to reply.
Yes, and they received comments from Attorney Royston late in the afternoon. And they're taking into consideration those eleven comments. But because it was received so late, they couldn't go through it item by item and hear the presentation. So they've asked for additional time to go through the eleven comments. Since the eleven comments, there's also been draft text presented by Attorney Royston, and you've been copied on all of that. So that's why they'd like additional time after the presentation. They began the eleven comments and they thought it would make more sense to take the eleven comments home, think about their individual thoughts on the eleven comments as they relate to the plan of development and in general with the text, and then come back, um, for their meeting, which is this Wednesday, to try to have a little more efficient meeting versus going comment by comment late in the evening.
Right. Similarly, the EDC has had thirty-five full calendar days.
So the EDC, we did not send them a referral. That's a courtesy referral and the thirty-five days does not apply.
So if we were to continue this public hearing on this matter to December eighteenth, each of those bodies, UDC and Planning, would have a meeting between now and December eighteenth.
So EDC made their decision and submitted the report. It was comments, probably, I believe it was Gateway that wanted to need an additional time because they only meet once a month.
Right.
Gateway and Planning have requested.
Yeah, Gateway.
More time.
And they've requested to keep the public hearing open. Did they specify a date?
The dates, no, they did not specify.
So December eighteenth works to keep it open, and if they reply, then we proceed.
I agree.
And if they don't reply, we would on December eighteenth have the option of keeping it open. They're at, with that in mind, then I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing on the Ulteric Zoning Commission Petition to Amend the Zoning Regulation, Section Fifty-three, Drive-Thru Windows, to our next regularly scheduled meeting of December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
What?
Second.
Oh, second. December second.
No, December, no, December eighteenth, and I'll second your motion.
And, and.
All right, we're all getting very tired now.
And part of the motion has to contain, has to contain seven P M., three oh two Main Street, second floor conference room, to be specific.
We're gonna take a vote on it.
Seconded by jury.
Yes.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, continue until the end.
And it, just one thing, for Attorney Royston, the packets do get prepared on the eleventh. I understand you are going to different boards and commissions. I'm sure you don't have complete presentations, but as much as you can get to the board by the eleventh or before the eleventh to get into the packets. I understand it may not have everything. It'll give them additional time to review versus receiving something at four o'clock, all of it the night of the meeting, even if there's partial portions. I think it's helpful to give the commission as much time as possible.
I, you know, do my best, uh, to do that. While I defend myself, uh, in the system. I mean, uh, you see, uh, things, for example, the Economic Development Commission letter, uh, we didn't get a copy of that.
So everything gets posted online? So, um, as we receive things, you can go right on the website and the file is available to review all the time. So we've tried, and we don't have to put everything online, so it's available to anyone who wants to look at it whenever, and we try to be good to keep that.
I appreciate my appreciation of you having done that and also having provided a, uh, a copy to the commission. I do thank you very passionately. Um, I have a feeling you don't want me to go much further.
The, the commission would, um, appreciate that your request for continuation, which we were doing based on waiting to get from a couple other commissioners, that you're prepared for the evening.
As much as you can be.
I prepare. I will be, I'm all right. Prepared to give you a full presentation. Oh, yes. Thank you, thank you.
Um, continuing with, uh, the agenda, there's nothing on the workshop for the evening.
No, I think we have enough.
We have enough.
Thank you. Things to work on. You're welcome.
Committee representatives and staff reports?
Thank you, and we continue. We're super busy in the office, um, you are gonna have additional applications, not just large applications. Uh, and I know it's nice to kind of plan to not go to a meeting on December eighteenth or January third, but unfortunately, it looks like we're gonna have business. Um, so you will have your next meeting, you have the two continued items. Um, Van Wilden is going to the Z B A, if they get through the Z B A next week, um, they're scheduled, if they get an approval, um, or if they get continued, we expect them to be on your meeting on the eighteenth as well as that Wilden is going for a variance to, um, go to a different property. Um, and then you have two applications related to the auto mall. Um, I don't suspect they're all gonna get completed in one night, so there's a possibility for January third, um, unless they go to the eighteen. So, and I know of three or four smaller special exceptions that are coming your way. The larger applications are kind of lost right now, or I, I don't know where they are, but, um, at this point, so I, I think you're gonna have a busy holiday season other than wrapping gifts and tree trimming or whatever else is going on, so just be prepared for that. Um, what do we have here? The, uh, we did receive news, you mentioned that we applied for a second resiliency grant that would take a look from pretty much Westbrook through the Chucker Beach area and the shoreline, and we did not get that grant. Um, I did inquire as to the, um, reasons. So typically, I guess they write a written response, uh, we'll take a look at it and see. Sometimes it may be things we could reapply, um, but unfortunately, we did not get it. Um, Daniel's propane, um, contacted me with a request for a site plan modification. Um, this is the property, one oh three Mill Rock Road. Um, some of them seem pretty simple, um, as far as switching out trees, as far as availability. However, one is to remove an interior landscaping island. Um, I know they, I believe it's gonna be less than fifteen spaces, so the island may not be required. And I just wanted to check if that's something you would wanna see as a modification to the special exception permit. Or something, Hannah?
Well, if it's gonna be less spaces and not required, I think that could be handled a little more straightly.
Will be more, one more space, one less island. Um, and I asked for the reasoning as to why they removed the island. If it's fifteen or fewer spaces, then it's fine. If it's fifteen contiguous spaces in a row, then without an interior landscaping island, then they're gonna have to put the island back. So I asked for some reasoning as to what they were doing. I didn't have a chance to pull the site plan, um, tonight. So if it's compliant, is it something minor or is it something you'd like to see? No, I think you could handle it administratively if it's minor.
Yeah.
Do you have to check to see then? Well, I don't think, I mean, typically if it's a modification, I mean, is it, it's not gonna increase the intensity or, or, you know, as you typically look at minor and major, but I think it seems kind of more of a site or field modification. I just, I'm not sure why the island was removed, um, so we'll go from there. Um, as far as enforcement, um, there's sections of Route One that are a complete disaster. Um, so that's on my radar. I also have four buildings with violations, commercial buildings. Um so that's on my radar. I also have four buildings with violations, commercial buildings um that have modified special exceptions, have done things to alter their site plans or special exceptions, deviated from special exceptions. So I have a good amount of enforcement to take care of. I I'm not ignoring it. We're just, um yeah, we've been consumed with things like yeah, draft regulations and we have another pretty major wetlands enforcement issue um that was in front of the Wetlands Commission at this point. Um what else? Is there anything left for me, questions or?
No, you have all none.
Um since you're talking about the propane place and also zero zero, what was that, Mill Rock or?
Middle side.
Yeah, yeah. Um just driving around back there, there's a boat storage, like a marine storage area and it doesn't look like winterized boats, but but boats that have just been sitting there and decaying. It's kind of near the um Connecticut Valley Railroad track. And it's in an enclosed lot, like
So when you go next to where the sheds are, the Atlas sheds.
Yeah.
So yeah, that that is actually a approved um marine business approved by this commission. They are pretty packed with shrink wrap and boat storage, but I think um we have very limited land and our regulations are very limited on where that use is allowed.
Right, I do see shrink wrap boats by the Red Atlas House.
Yeah, that goes, that's the entryway in.
Okay.
And then that goes through the back.
Okay, so through the back, it looks like really like okay, questionable and I'm just wondering what's leading to the environment. I don't know, you have to go back and look at things like that.
I haven't been back there in a while and I'm gonna take a look. I'm not sure.
It's a licensed operating business.
Okay.
Sold boats and trailers.
Okay.
Um I think at the time of year, they
It looks like a junkyard kind of, so I
It's a boatyard and I don't think it's I haven't been back there with
Boatyard looks like, my husband works at Point, but this is, it doesn't look really gross.
And in the middle of all that, there's actually a really nice building.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's all, there's all the storage and
And it's kind of a unique one too because a lot of the pilots' points and the other marinas also have operations there where um I guess they really can't pack in as many boats because it interferes with the other operators.
Like these boats just look like they've been there for a long time.
Unfortunately, that's something that I can't really enforce how long the boats have been there. Um sometimes I know that there's issues where, and I'm sure it happens with the marina you're talking about, where people don't pay their storage and they leave their boats.
Yeah.
And then what happens is, so what happens is the operator, and I'm not a hundred percent sure how it works, but that operator of the property has to go through and apply to deep and have an auction. They can't just dispose of that. There's a process to it.
There might be a problem. Good?
I think that's enough. I think that's enough. Question to it there.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, opposed? Thank you very much, everyone.